Before we go ahead and convene the Airport Authority, I would like to take this time to welcome our newest member to the council. And I believe Steve will undergo the new passing of the iPad, so to speak.
Ancient ritual.
But welcome aboard.
Thank you. Glad to be here and I hope that I can help.
If we could go ahead and please call to order the Seminole Airport Authority for April 12th, 2016. Roll call, please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin. Bill Wantland.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Gary How.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Larry Church.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary How.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Under bids, current business, consideration of possible action to approve the renewal quote of $2,400 annually for the exclusion exclusive of terrorism coverage for liability insurance at the municipal airport. The premium is unchanged from previous years.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary How.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If we could now call to order the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
(cough)
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. Gary How.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and actions of consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary How.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? If we could now please call to order the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Bill Wantland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. Tim Poplin. Gary How.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary How.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? Moving on to Resolutions Number One. Consideration of possible action to approve Resolution Number SUA 2016-1. A resolution setting water and sanitary sewer rates and annual rate increases for all users of water and sanitary sewer services within the city of Seminole.
This follows the schedule that we have set out.
Yes, this is part of the compliance with the settlement agreement that we talked about in our last meeting whereby we're backing the rates back from the what we'd done, when was it, last July? We're backing those to those previous rates, the July 2015.
Yeah, we agreed to that.
That's correct.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary How.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under ordinances, bids, number two. Consideration of possible action to approve soliciting sealed bids for the relocation of water and sewer mains related to the ODOT Bridge project on East Broadway to be funded by the city and fully funded by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation with no ultimate cost to the city. The relocation project is estimated to cost approximately $650,000.
So until we get this reimbursed, we have the funds to, where would it come from?
Well, we don't anticipate that they're going to draw $650,000 at the same time. So they'll likely be us paying out and receiving back and forth through the duration of the event. The answer to your question is some of it can come from bond money, some of it will come out of our reserves. And what else, Jay?
That's shit covered.
You got any hidden fund that we could possibly draw from?
Unfortunately not.
No? Okay. He doesn't have a hidden fund.
So we should be able to take care of this.
Yeah, if we see that it's going to be an issue, we've been told by ODOT that it will not be an issue.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Bill Wantland.
Yes.
Gary How.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three. Consideration of possible action to approve declaring an emergency on the replacement of a manhole at the wastewater treatment plant and authorizing the city manager to accept the low quote for the replacement of the manhole at a cost not to exceed $40,000 to be funded from FEMA funds received due to recent flooding.
Okay, so this is one of those things that happened during our flood, the FEMA event. And we identified it as a problem. It had eroded around the manhole at the wastewater treatment plant. But recently, the side wall of the manhole collapsed. And the manhole itself collapsed within itself and was completely clogged. We had to take action, so we're going about fixing it right now, so we'd like for you to bless that if you could. Otherwise, we're going to shut it all down and nobody can get rid of their wastewater.
Motion to approve.
Is this something that's normal?
No.
That's the first time it's happened.
Yes, sir. This is, this was directly related to the flood. The water came down and just found a soft spot around that manhole and washed it out. But this will be reimbursed by FEMA. This was, this is already a project by FEMA.
Second. DeeDee Patterson?
Chris moved to approve.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
If there is no other current business, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If we could now please call to order the Seminole City Council from April 12th. Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Here.
DeeDee Patterson?
Here.
Gary How?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Tim Poplin. Bill Wantland?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Jeff Griffin? Shane Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen.
Under Elections and Appointments, number one. Consideration of possible action to elect a member of the council to serve as president of the council to preside at all council meetings in the absence of the mayor.
I think Bill's done a very good job.
I believe we have a nominee who accepts that nomination. Do we have anyone else that would like to be nominated? We don't have, do we need to do a roll call on this? All those in favor of having Bill serve as the president of the council, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations. Number two. Consideration of possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Jeff Griffin to the Seminole Economic Development Council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I was a little hesitant there.
We had to get North from Judge.
Under public hearing, open public hearing to disclose, excuse me, to close an economic development infrastructure grant from the Department of Commerce. I know.
Hello. Back in 2011, the city applied for and was awarded a grant to assist Blue Wave boats in increasing their business. At the time of the application, Blue Wave had no outside storage facility and was in need of a perimeter fence around that facility. There were the two things, that plus a gravel parking lot under the storage facility. Those were the things they asked for with the grant. In return, they pledged 28 new jobs and to match the funds by purchasing equipment, new computer software, new fiberglass molds for their new boat line, and new trucks and to overhaul a couple of trucks they had. All of the performance measures were met. Blue Wave has shown they matched the grant funds with equipment purchases and new trucks. And today, they have more than 28 projected jobs than they pledged. Contractors have all been paid in full, and the last piece of the grant puzzle is just the closeout process, and this is part of it. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer or find them at.
Is that 28 additional jobs?
Yes, they started out at the beginning of the grant process with 69 jobs total for the plant, and they pledged 28 new positions, which would have put them at just under 100.
Ninety-seven.
Right now, they have 113. So they exceeded the minimum. They're happy with that as well, too.
And for the, for the public's information, this was just basically the city putting no money into this. This was like a grant for the Blue Wave.
That is correct. We secured the grant funds for them, but Blue Wave secured the matching funds. It was a 50/50 grant. The grant funds, whatever the grant funds were, Blue Wave matched it in kind with the equipment that they purchased, the fiberglass molds they purchased, the computer software and stuff.
I left a lot of hide out there occasionally. But other than that, there were no monies left there.
They also have been a good citizen.
Yes, they have.
They've been a big help.
Are there any other questions? We will consider it closed then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the city council meeting?
Amy Britt, on behalf of Seminole Chamber, and I just wanted to come and say thank you guys for making Oklahoma, you guys approved the move. It was a lot of stress, but for the first year, I think it went very smoothly. 164 cars, 100 vendors, even with ballgames and all kinds of stuff going on. Thanks to the city employees for all the help that they gave us. And we've had a recap meeting, and there are a lot of things to improve for the next upcoming years, but thanks, and for those of you that came out, I hope you enjoyed it, so thank you.
My three-year-old said we need more jumpy things.
Jumpy things.
He's three. Any other appearances for the city council meeting? Under bids, number three. Consideration of possible action to approve the bid of $9,900 from Metro Heat and Air for the HVAC system for the kitchen at the Heritage House to be funded from building maintenance contingency in the general fund.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four. Consideration of possible action to approve the bid of $8,875 from Cobart Roofing for re-roofing Strather Chapel at Maple Grove Cemetery to be funded from insurance proceeds and private donations.
I'll move the approval of that. We've got some powerful old ladies on the board who will yell at us and we don't get it done.
Young women.
Not only that, but this is a lifetime guarantee, I understand, too, which is great. But we do have some damage from the bad roof we now have. I second it.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five. Consideration of possible action to approve the quote and related lease agreement, as well as the Oklahoma rider to state and local government rental with Don's copiers for a Savin C-2003 photocopier and Savin C-306 for the fire department at a cost of $240 per month for 60 months. This is a renewal agreement to replace obsolete equipment.
Have we been paying the same amount?
Yes.
On the copier, yes, sir. I'm sorry. I was just catching up.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolutions, number six. Consideration of possible action to approve Resolution Number 2016-4. A resolution authorizing a lease purchase agreement in the amount of $217,800 with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for fire department equipment and designating the mayor and/or the city manager as authorized representatives of the city as lease signors.
Chief Becker, could you kind of let the public know kind of what that's being used for, please?
This is just the final paperwork for the new SCBA's that we purchased.
What's an SCBA?
Self-contained reading apparatus that we use when we structure fires, hazmat, anything that we may be in a hazardous condition. This is just the final piece of paper. It was actually supposed to be done earlier, but it was lost in transaction.
Something very needed.
Yes, definitely.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under ordinances, number seven. Consideration of possible action to approve ordinance number 1192, an ordinance relating to water rates amending total 17 utilities regarding rates and annual rate increases.
This pretty much do the agreement again.
That's right. That's a cleanup of what you did in utilities.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eight. Consideration of possible action to approve the emergency clause related to ordinance 1192 above.
Let's say no. Moved to approve.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine. Consideration of possible action to approve ordinance 1193, an ordinance related to sanitary sewer rates amending total 17 utilities regarding rates and annual rate increases.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm afraid to read number 10. Consideration of possible action to approve the emergency clause relating to ordinance 1193 above.
Shall we move the table at this time? Move its approval.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration of possible action to approve the lease purchase agreement with PNC Finance LLC for the purchase of fire department equipment in the amount of $217,800 as approved by resolution above. The first of four years annual lease payments of $75,394.61 to be funded from the general fund, CIP. This is a budgeted item.
Is it the pay port?
That's right.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
To reiterate what was said earlier, number 12. Consideration of possible action to approve the closeout of the CDBG grant, Project 15041 ED111 for construction of boat storage and fencing for Blue Wave boats.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 13. Consideration of possible action to approve increasing admission and rental fees at the municipal swimming pool.
What are they now?
Current cost is $1.50 for 12 and under. We're looking at going to $3. Ages 13 and older is $3 currently, looking to go to $5.
What about, is there any way to make an exception for people that are on a fixed income of under $800 a month, for instance? We have a lot of people who are living on a social security disability and welfare, and their kids may not be able to afford to go to school.
Currently, we do not have a system that can make allowance for that.
Is that something that we can look at sometime in the future?
Absolutely. You tell, you're the boss now. You tell me.
Well, I would like to look at that.
You say jump, I say how high.
I'd like to look at a possible way to allow those children to afford to go to school.
Okay.
Has it been a $1.50 fund ever?
Go ahead.
As far as their income, I might add, it's been $733 for it. Recently, it was cut to about $41, so.
Why, why the need for the increase, Steve?
We're doing a lot more things. We're offering movie nights, we're trying to upgrade some facilities, we've bought some more equipment. Aveda's Foundation gave us some, some grant money to upgrade some things. It's just getting nicer. And, and when we look at comparable rates, I don't have those with me, but when we look at regional comparable rates, we're, we don't even, we don't even get on the radar, much less.
Not only that, but we have the splash pad, which is still free.
That's correct.
And, uh, and the cost just, you know, continue to go up, and while we probably will never recoup enough to pay for all of the costs.
Chemical costs.
Oh, I, I agree that the, the rates, I mean, we need to maintain it, because I feel they just don't want to cut people out.
Right.
Maybe we can find a way in the future where those folks can get them, uh...
Yeah. I'll, I'll have to...
Put it in people's mind.
Yeah, I'll have to chase down a way to, to track that. I don't know if there's a card that, that we could, I, I don't know how to do that, but I'll find a way.
When checking other rates and so on, in other cities, did you see anything like that come in, as far as handicap or...
Say that one more time, Dee Dee.
In checking the other rates of the other cities, you said you checked something, did you not? Okay, did you see anything like that come in off of theirs?
Oh, where they made allowance for low income? I'm not aware. Sharon, did you see anything?
No, most of it was a flat fee.
I'd just like to see those children, uh, put a little instead of running straight.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rule call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Reports, Mayor, the, one thing I just want to say, Amy, the awesome festival, um, we were very fortunate, we did not have any rain, and so that was awesome. I was completely impressed with the number of cars we had and all of that. That was, that was very good. Um, a few more jumpy things, maybe?
I tried to make this a more adult, um, friendly event, and so we kind of tried to keep the number of...
Sure.
But we'll, we'll make sure 4th of July is a big hit for us.
I think we're jumpy things.
But otherwise, it was very, very good. City manager?
Yeah, staff has requested jumpy things at the city council meeting. No, we...
There are not enough hurdles to get here.
I missed that, but I'm sure. The, uh, the golf tournament was the same weekend as the Maiden, Oklahoma. We also had the preseason baseball tournament. I've heard from several of you that we need to address the parking situation. Uh, we, we just, we, not too long ago, maybe Thursday, uh, had a session with the Chamber of Commerce that was discussed, how we're going to solve some of the parking issues going forward. I, highly likely that we're going to either move one or two of the things off date so that we're not trying to cram all three of the golf tournament, the preseason baseball, and the Maiden, Oklahoma together at the same time. But it was great. If you got to go down there, it was, it was fun for just about everyone. I know I'm pretty positive, just because my daughter helps out at the baseball field, that, uh, there was a lot of revenue lost when, when the Maiden, Oklahoma was bringing in their funnel cakes instead of buying, uh, things out of the, out of the baseball facility, so, uh, so there are some growing pains, but overall, I think it was a very positive experience. I think the chamber did a nice job on, on their side of it, for certain. Along with baseball, I want to brag on John Kramer and his crews, uh, his, all his help. How many do you have helping you now? One? Maybe, maybe a half, half of one. But, you know, when I got here, I, I think I, I'm pretty sure we had maybe 18 teams.
Fifteen or 13.
Fifteen, and now we've got 30...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two teams playing in Seminole on baseball. I'm sure softball is probably 30 teams. So our programs have advanced significantly. A lot of that is due to the decisions that you guys make and helping them grow and, and improve the facilities, but it brings a lot of traffic to our stores, it creates commerce, and not just that, it's a quality of life issue. When, when those kids can get out there and, and have quality facilities to play in, it sure, it helps, and it, it's a neat thing to have in your community. I would mention that tomorrow at noon, if you want to be a guest at Rotary Club, we are going to graduate our Leadership Seminole class, the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class is going to graduate and take their place among the leaders of this community that are going to lead us forward. Rightly, Randall? And Shelley, I saw, I'm sorry, I left Shelley out. Yeah, they're going to lead us from now on, so, uh, that'll start at 12 o'clock tomorrow. So you're welcome to come. It is kind of a big deal. They've put a lot of time, seriously, they've put a lot of time in trying to learn and, and grow in their understanding of what goes on around Seminole, so it's a good program. That's all I've got, Mayor.
City lawyer.
Our Char, uh, Charter Review Committee has met again, and, uh, they will meet again tomorrow, and I think that we're going to finalize the recommendations that they have tomorrow, uh, so that it can be brought forward to the council for your input and guidance. So Sharon has done a great job in, in researching a lot of the, the issues and has put together some really good products, uh, for them, so, um, just wanted to keep you updated.
Ward one, Bill Wantland.
I just want to second what's been said about the Maiden, Oklahoma. Of course, this is the first year it's not been on Main Street, and while it was tremendous to have it where it was, because that's where all the accidents, it was also nice to be able to drive downtown on Saturday afternoon. And again, our thanks to all of the people, uh, who work for the city of Seminole. We are so blessed in all the projects that have been going on, and I just want to thank everyone that's worked so hard, because they, I don't know of a city that's got a better staff than with you.